Good evening, folks. This time we'll call the Tuesday, June 3, 2014, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I recognize Commissioner Renee Griffith for our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together as a group of people who have a desire to serve the citizens of this county. And as we consider the budget that is before us, we pray that you give us wisdom to know how to use the money wisely and to be good stewards of the resources that you have so graciously blessed us with. Lord, we thank you for all the people that serve in this county in different capacities from our -- the workers for the -- that work for the county to sheriff's deputies, EMS, our military. We thank you, Lord, that there are so many people who have a heart to serve and to do it with integrity. And Father, tonight we pray that you just give us wisdom as we consider all the issues that are before us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Iredell County. It is a privilege and one that we do not take lightly, and we humbly ask for wisdom. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Check my name. Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to this agenda from the staff this evening?
No, sir.
Is there any commissioner who has an adjustment to this agenda? Hearing none, I would move then that we adopt this agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no presentation of special recognitions and awards this evening that I'm aware of. We do have an appointment before the board this evening, and it is Iredell State's for Schools' request to share an update on the IMPACT grant. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we appreciate the opportunity this evening to come before you. I am Patrick Obley. I'm the project director for the IMPACT grant with the district. This is an exciting evening for us to be able to showcase and highlight some of the work that's taking place in our schools, not only for you but for the community as well. So we do appreciate you giving us time this evening to highlight what's been happening with blended learning and the grant initiative. As part of the project, the Innovation Innovative Methods for Personalizing Academics Complemented by Technology grant, this is a bold and reform initiative within the school district. It is cross-functional as far as all of our grades in the middle grades and high schools as well with our students and our teachers, and we're just so excited to have the opportunity to bring about the initiatives in which we want to change with our students, moving them forward, personalizing their educational experience, and helping them grow academically. Our goals are the same goals that follow the mission and the vision of the school district, and that is our students being successful when they leave us being prepared for college and careers. As part of the grant initiative, there's four goals within the grant. Individualized student-driven learning, and that's where we talk about personalized learning for our students. Revolutionized instruction. In this goal, we talk about blended learning. Now blended learning is a strategy we use in order to reach students. We take traditional face-to-face instruction, that's traditional teaching of a teacher in a classroom, but we blend that with 21st century tools and resources and technology, and those two come together within the classroom to meet the needs of the students. That's what we call blended learning. You'll hear much about blended learning. What we're going to give you an update this evening on is the blended learning initiative and then also the one-to-one component with the laptops. The third goal of the grant is to cultivate high-quality educators, and then we have a fourth goal, which is infuse cross-cutting data decisions. Tonight, we're going to showcase again the blended learning, and we're going to feature that through a video. And then I have with us this evening that will just speak very briefly to you, one of our principals, a teacher, and a student from one of our Wave One schools where we've been implementing blended learning with the laptops this last semester. And so with that, I'll go ahead and start the video, and then we'll go into further discussion.
Before we had the MacBooks, we would go to the academic labs as much as possible, and we're very blessed with as many as we had, but everybody in the school was trying to take their kids to the academic lab. So we were getting backlog, and you would start a lesson, and then you couldn't get back in there. And so it was just very difficult. And so now that we have access every day to these MacBooks and we have the high-speed internet that we do and all of these things, it's just like this door has been opened, and the ability for our kids to learn and the ability to differentiate in so many different ways and to meet the kids' needs and their interest for things, it has just -- it's just exploded. And I didn't even realize it, how much that that was going to be able to happen. And this is starting, you know, next year, my 18th year of teaching, I just watching it from when I started to now, I just never imagined how much it could change in just the few weeks that we've had. Well, generally, you can walk into any classroom, and it's being used in a variety of ways. The internet has just opened the doors for education. I mean, when you talk about learning styles, and we do learning styles inventories at the beginning of the year, and that's very much a part of the career readiness standards, we have kids who are visual learners, we have kids who are kinesthetic learners, we have kids who are auditory learners. So these MacBooks, they meet that need. And when I have a child who's an auditory learner and I'm over here working, well, that's part of what my MacBook can do. And it has so many features that we're still learning as we go. Kids are taking screenshots, and they're emailing work to us. And one of the greatest benefits is that before, we always say to the parents, you know, trying to get the boys to talk to us and ask us questions, and "I can't help you if you don't talk to me," I had more kids emailing me in the past weeks than probably all the kids talking to me in years. And they email me homework, they email me questions, they email me just to say, "Is it addressed that day? Is it this?" And they communicate with us now. And it has just bridged the gap between, you know, this teacher-student relationship, which is exactly what we want in middle school, is that connection and that bond. And that is one of the greatest successes for our students, is finding a bond with their teachers. And that is -- we wouldn't have had that if we didn't have these MacBooks. And so they do ask us questions, "Do I have this homework assignment?" Or, "I was out sick. I just got an email today. I was out sick yesterday. What's my homework?" You know, most kids usually came in and didn't remember they had homework, and homework's out in the basket four weeks, and they never picked it up. And now the kids are talking to us and asking us, and, you know, and that's exciting to us as teachers. Those are ways that we can help them be successful and teach them life skills or for their future jobs.
The MacBooks really helped me, like, be able to do anything that I need to do.
The MacBooks really helped us like a second teacher in the classroom.
It would be a big, 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 big struggle for the teachers and us because they only had to schedule days for the MacBooks, like, the academic lab again, and then it would just, like, make the whole school, like, cramped and all that.
Again, we want to say thank you to you. We know that grant funds were utilized for purchasing devices, but it also encountered a commitment both on our local Board of Education and you as well, allowing us to move forward with local funds to purchase the MacBooks. I have three individuals that I've asked to come here before you this evening for our presentation. Mr. Jimmy Elliott is principal at East Middle School. Victoria Principay is an eighth-grade Spanish teacher at Mount Moore. And then we have Cassidy Brant, a sixth-grade student at Northview, and they're going to share some of their experiences.
Thank you, board members, for this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the blended learning model that we have at East Middle. Everybody thinks that the blended model kind of started just back in March, but to be honest with you, these strategies have been worked on all year long, and we've had a lot of support from our central office. This is not something that's just been thrown together. It's been something that's been talked about and been planned for, for over a year. Teachers have been trained as far as knowing what a blended classroom would look like. And blended learning is not something that's real new because you do see a lot of it in the elementary setting, but the devices is what has made a difference, and that is the thing that our students like the best. What we say is when the devices come on, we're really just simply teaching the way kids learn now. We're catching up to them. So we feel like that the devices have made a huge difference as far as -- and this is not one, you know, an indicator that we use a lot, but we do know that student involvement has risen tremendously in the classroom. And our discipline, our ODRs, which are our discipline notices that come to the office, have dropped by conservatively at least a third since they've been there. So the more engaged we have kids, the more learning is going to take place, and we're going to reach goals and close gaps much quicker. It is a community effort. We have folks -- Mr. Norman, your son, has helped me tremendously at East Middle as far -- he helps us on the technical end of it, and he has helped educate me and helped me to better prepare children to how to use these devices in the classroom. Of course, Mr. Hough, your wife and I work together, and she's very good at helping kids with that technology. And she's the one that, when we looked at something two years ago at East Middle, she was the one who wanted us to look at technology and how it can improve learning in the classroom. We were just very fortunate that our Stateful School System was awarded the grant. They worked very hard for that, and then, like we said, was able to, you know, put these devices in the classroom. But our kids are very excited about it. They've taken great ownership of the devices. Here's what they tell me. They say, "Mr. Elliott, you didn't get us Chucks, you got us Air Jordans." So what they were simply saying is, "We got tremendously nice devices to help us in the classroom, and that was with your help, too, that we got those." So just know that our kids take great ownership, they protect those devices, not with their lives, but they protect them and make sure no one puts their hands on them. They know that they're responsible for them. But, folks, it is helping our kids. We can differentiate more. Our kids take more ownership of their own learning. So it has made a tremendous difference and a great impact at East Middle in just the four short weeks that we've had them. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Principay, and I will talk in behalf of the teacher of Mount Moore IB School. First, I will really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to share our experience about blended learning. First, I would say that blended learning is not only about technology. Blended learning is a very strong instruction practice, you know? Students in our classroom, usually, they very tired to see teachers speak all the time. They really get boring, and students want to take control of their own learning. And by doing blended learning and using this book, Mac, students are really excited. Every day, they come first, as soon as they get to the classroom, the first thing they would say, "Are we going to use the computers?" "Yes, we do." And, you know, learning language is really -- sometimes it can be frustrating for students, but in this time, students are really, every day, eager. They know how to use their computers. This is the tool they know, and they live with this. So the students are really eager to do it. And also about blended learning is not only it's something that is going to take a process teacher to know about this, but it's something, nothing to -- it's going to be -- it's nothing that is going to be, like, for example, students not going to be able to see. It's not -- everybody's going to be able, it's going to be open. It's immediately feedback. Everybody can -- the students are engaged, the student can reflect on what they're doing, and it's really, it's the tool of the 21st century. We are really grateful. Thank you for having this opportunity. Thank you very much.
I am Cassidy Brant, and I'm a sixth grader at Northview IB. And before blended learning, we would, like, learn the same thing. We would all read from the same textbook, and we had one textbook. And we would just do the same thing, pretty much, all together as a class. Now with blended learning, we have lots of sources, not just that one textbook. And instead of, like, that one textbook, we have lots of sources, and the MacBooks also help with that, you know? You have all the websites that you can use. Also, with all these different sources, we learn a lot more about citations, which I am kind of weird, and I like citations. And that helps us through high school and college with that. We have -- some people have different learning styles, like auditory and stuff like that. So sometimes, some people didn't like listening to speeches, they didn't really like hearing that, didn't help them. So now we can use different things, like, in my language arts class, one time we used Quizlet, which is like a website that you can use to do learned things, words, and -- or we could, like, make flashcards, and it was a lot of fun like that. Also, before the MacBooks, we had our laptop carts. And the laptop carts, they didn't work very well. They -- some of them had battery problems. Also, you would know, you had to take a lot of time to get them out of the carts and give them out and boot them up and stuff. And also, sometimes, you know, if it had a battery problem, you have to go back and get a different laptop. And we would only use those about once a month or every so often. Now with the MacBooks, we use them daily, and we have a lot more time, and we can get them out, and they're quick to turn on. A lot of the MacBooks also help with cooperation between the classes. We have, one time, we were reading a book in language arts about Chinese Cinderella, and in humanities, we were learning about the Chinese civilizations. Also, it helps a lot when you have to do things at home with the laptops, because some people, they didn't have access to the internet.
Thank you very much to our speakers. That concludes the blended learning component. I know the second item on the agenda is the one-to-one component, the device budget update you had asked us to inform you of as well. Do you have any questions for me or the individuals that spoke on the blended learning component?
One question. How many do you have installed at this time?
We had four Wave One schools that we installed with the one-to-one component this spring. We started launching laptops with students in March. We completed the rollouts in April. That was approximately 2,150 laptops. We deployed 800, approximately 800 laptops to teachers and staff, starting in February. As soon as we had their approval and we placed the order, teachers were the first to receive laptops. They continue to have those laptops. We're going to allow teachers returning to have those laptops all summer long so they can continue their learning and professional development as well in preparation for the rest of the students receiving their devices in the fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions, move on to the budget update.
Any further questions, these folks? Okay, go ahead and proceed, sir.
For the budget, for the budget component, this, again, is on the one-to-one component of the grant. Just to give you an update of the grant expenses for laptops for this year, $3,187,634.35. Local expense, including sales taxes, listed there. That would be for the teacher laptops, were not included in the grant, and then local laptops we needed for Lake Norman High School. Wave One School's technology fee, that was $20 prorated. This year, we collected $39,643. So the total grant budget for device payments will equal $5,812,186.61. I'm happy to report to you, we increased the budget for devices from the grant by $418,868 -- excuse me, $686.61. This was on a budget transfer. We had funds in year one. Year one ended in December of 2013. That year one of the grant was January 1 through December 31, 2013. We're now in grant year two. So at the end of the grant year, we had funds for personnel. For instance, in my position, it was budgeted January 1. I came onboard with the district with the grant in May. So therefore, there would have been funds set aside for salary that was not needed until positions were filled. So that happened not only for me, but all of the grant staff, our blended learning coaches that started in August. So we took those funds and asked on amendment to the U.S. Department of Education, since we knew we had extra expenses locally for the devices, that those funds be allowed to be transferred for that, and they approved that amendment. We will be very conservative. We will be very responsible on the funds that are issued annually for the grant, and we intend to do the same thing at the end of this grant year. If there's additional funds that we can use for those devices, we'll apply for an amendment through the U.S. Department of Education and move those funds accordingly. But I did want to give you an update of that. The second part of the update is just to give you some additional information, and this was presented to our Board of Education last night. I'll be discussing this with an analysis in detail at next week's board meeting. But we are looking at our Month Seven enrollment projections. The devices we purchased this year were based on us trying to implement in January and February. Based on the current numbers, we had, it was approximately 11,491 students. We looked at Month Seven, which is typically a membership count at the time of the period where you look at that for projecting your numbers for the next school year. And right now, we have a bubble of students that's moving from fifth grade into sixth grade. These are not new students projected to come into the district. It's just simply we're issuing devices in the one-to-one component in grades six through 12. We have more students coming into sixth grade next year than we have seniors that are leaving. So we're projecting that we may need additional laptops. Now, that's, you know, we estimated if we needed the 307 laptops, those would be approximately $300,000. We're not asking you for additional funding. We're looking at ways to fund that. Certainly, we'll look at some of the grant funds that we can use towards that, energy credits or other rebates of funding that we can receive back, other local funding. But one of the pieces of information I do want to leave you with is, the devices that we purchased, all 12,300, for the teachers and the students are the same device. So if we have devices that were earmarked for teachers, that we have other funds that we can use to purchase those devices, then we can move devices to the students and vice versa. So it's very flexible and allowing us, as numbers for students go up or students decrease. And one of the issues with average daily membership is, you know, it fluctuates. And when we issue out devices for students, we want to make sure we have a device for every child. So we have to have enough devices for that peak, for that high point, because we never know when that's going to come. We're going to project it the best we can. But I didn't want you to hear or see in the local media or hear of discussions taking place on the purchase of additional devices without informing you or letting you know. That would be simply based on enrollments. As we have additional students moving through the system, we would need additional devices. If we have additional devices, let's say the enrollment goes down and we have additional devices, then those would be utilized for spares. We have approximately 177 spare devices that our technology department uses in case of computers that are down for whatever reason. So that's actually below the threshold, kind of the minimum, what's recommended with 12,300 kind of in the field. And so if there are additional devices, we certainly would anticipate needing additional ones as spares, but we hope we don't. But certainly, the devices that we have would be utilized and put to use. But that concludes the budget update portion this evening. Do you have questions regarding the information I've presented?
Any questions? Okay, thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would say we'll have blended learning taking place in all of our schools. Again, as we start the school year, we invite all of you out to the schools and welcome you in any of our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move immediately to our public hearings. At this point, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to a request, case number 1405-1, from Kenneth and Deborah Lundie to add office storage space to an existing non-conforming animal kennel. Mr. Todd, let these folks -- just let these folks go ahead and depart, and then we'll proceed.
Okay, good evening to the board. Tonight, we've got a little unusual of a request. It's not a straightforward rezoning like you're used to. Several of you have seen these before, but this is an expansion request for a non-conforming use. They're looking at adding just an 18-by-18 office space. This property is currently zoned residential. It's been a kennel for a number of years. Kennels are, they're either allowed in a residential district with a minimum acreage size, based on the number of dogs. Again, this one was there before the zoning came into place. The alternative to allow a commercial kennel in a commercial zoning district requires a special use permit. So there's kind of two routes to go in order to accommodate the applicant on getting his expansion. Was, one was to go through a rezoning on the property, then turn around and go through a special use permit with the Board of Adjustment, essentially two public hearings. This option, as long as he meets the criteria in this section of the non-conforming, he can do the addition, and the zoning stays as it currently is. Staff supports this request based on the following. The enlargement will not cause substantial harm to the adjoining property owners. The enlargement will not result in traffic increases beyond the capacity of the road serving said use. The enlargement will not result in emissions or smoke, fumes, noise, odor, or dust, which will be detrimental to the character of the district or the health, safety, or general welfare of the community. And the enlargement will maintain all minimum setbacks and buffer requirements of the use district in which said use would be permitted. This is on Old Moxville Highway. You can see the property outlined in blue. Actually, the back is zoned residential office, the front zoned residential, or R20. To the north, you have industrial zoning. If you drive out there, it's definitely not residential in nature for that area. The future land use plan shows it, employment center with industrial office mixed. Of course, you've got State's was planning jurisdiction right across the road. This is the aerial of the property. The red box shows the addition that they're looking at adding to the existing facility. And again, it meets all the setback requirements. Planning Board voted seven to zero to approve this request. Just another aerial of the property zoomed out. You can see the adjacent properties, the adjacent uses. Few pictures of the property. Basically, where that fence is, is where the addition would go. This is back out on Old Moxville, looking north, looking south, directly across the And again, staff does support this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Todd? Okay. Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forth, state your name, please. Anyone for or against it? So, you know, one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion or discussion at your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to recommend in favor of the expansion and to make a finding that the request meets all criteria to be considered. that the request meets all criteria, to be considered in Section 15.5 of the Land Development Code.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion on his motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Again, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing to consider a request, case number 1405-2, from Broadway Group to rezon point 63 acres at 5155 Taylorsville Highway, Stony Point from RA to NB. Mr. Todd?
Okay, this request before us tonight is a typical rezoning. You can see the total property is outlined in red with existing residential and neighborhood business on the front section. It's been neighborhood business since 1990 with countywide zoning. The portion in question tonight is the piece outlined in blue, and that's being requested to go from residential agriculture to neighborhood business, straight neighborhood business. The staff supports this request based on the 2030 Horizon Plan, calling for the area to be corridor commercial. A usable portion of the site is already zoned NB. The site is adjacent to other NB zoned properties, and potential traffic impact should not come close to the road capacity. This is a map showing the 2030 Horizon Plan, showing majority of the area corridor commercial. You've got Taylorsville Highway to the north. You've got the rail line, Alexander Rail, running adjacent to Taylorsville Highway with some industrial uses to the north, and then some residential uses over in this area and also here. Then you get down into some commercial uses as you go farther east or south on Taylorsville Highway. This is the aerial showing the different uses. Again, you can see the existing commercial, and you go into some industrial and then residential on the west side. These are a few pictures of the property. The property line essentially runs in this area, so it's this property to the right is the property that be rezoned. Just another view of the subject property. Standing out on Taylorsville Highway, looking east, looking west or back to the north, across Taylorsville Highway, the existing industrial uses. And again, staff supports this request. Planning Board voted seven to zero to recommend in favor of this request.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Todd? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this case, either for or against? If you so desire, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Gail Mantler, and I'm representing the Broadway Group. And I would like to respectfully request a favorable vote from neighborhood, the surrounding property is neighborhood business, and the piece that we are looking at, as you can see, is just that little blue corner. And the reason we're asking for that is because we're going to put our detention pond. We are going to put a general merchandise, general business retail store on the site. And I would like to respectfully request a favorable vote. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yeah, come forward and state your name for the record, please.
We oppose of all this happening, the businesses coming that close to the house. I mean, all this area right here in that yellow and all the way down, even across Plant Barn, that's all residential. The only business that you actually see is across the street. And behind it, about four houses down, three houses down, there's two other houses in between. So this is the only business in that little small area that we're, they're putting up. We don't want, we don't want a big business right there across the street when we have, you know, a bunch of kids in the area.
All right, would you state your name, please?
Timothy Chase.
Timothy Chase.
Yeah, live at 126 Plant Barn Lane.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I live right across the road at 671 West Lackey Farm Road. And I was opposed to the business being there. Obviously, it's going to be facing my house. I've talked to the builders, and we were kind of trying to adjust something about, like, leaving the trees up, the mature trees, because we don't, we don't really think they need to be tore down, because they're actually in the right of way, and that will keep the noise down, that'll keep the trash down, you know, just to give like a buffer, because this is a residential area. That's going to be the only business, you know, basically, right there amongst all these houses, you know. And she's pretty well, I mean, she's working with us and being really nice and stuff about leaving the trees and stuff up. And that's, that's the only thing I was opposing to is, you know, her tearing the trees down. You know, I'm not opposed to the business being there, I just want the trees left. And she's pretty well been working with me and talking with me and stuff about it. Because, you know, it is neighborhood business, but it is a neighborhood. And this is not a regular, like, regular neighborhood business. This is like a real commercial business, you know, and it's going to be right next to our houses. I mean, and it's, it's, you know, a lot of traffic going to be in and out, a lot of, you know, trash that wasn't there before and stuff that, you know, people don't want there. You know, needless to say, and I'm not saying that I'm like opposed to the business being there, I just don't want the trees tore down. There's a lot of mature trees there that would be a buffer, you know, for the people in the community. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jewel Jordan. I live at 659 West Lackey Farm Road. I'm here because of the trees. The trees have been there like a very, very long time, and they're really beautiful. We don't want them torn down. They do act as a buffer between, for the road there, and that buffers some, would buffer some of the noise, would buffer some of the view. It's very important, and it's very important to the residents along the road, whether they're here or not. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hey, my name is Kim Tatum. I live at 108 Plant Barn Lane. I was totally opposed about the whole Dollar General going there, period, but, I mean, it's going. It would be great if the trees could stay, and we're also concerned about trash. The Dollar General on Highway 90 and on Old Mountain Road as well, at any given time you go by there, their parking lot is full of trash, their yards aren't kept up, and we don't want the same right there at our door. If there could be any kind of thing put in place where they couldn't do that. I don't know if there is or not, but I know both of the two Dollar Generals that I just named, they're always, always, always trash in the parking lot, and very seldom is their grass ever cut. I mean, it always looks messy, always. And it's going to be, these two is going to have to look at it out their front door. I mean, it's not something that you're going to really want to look at. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Todd, does the ordinance require any natural buffer or man-made buffer? Is any requirement?
The ordinance for Taylorsville Highway, it is going to require roadway buffer on that end. For West Lackey, there's no, there's no official buffer in place. The parking lot does have to have canopy trees. A lot of times, what we see on those is if there's existing trees, a lot of developers want to use those, take advantage of them, not have to go in and plant trees. But again, they could definitely, there's no specific requirement that would make them leave that in place.
Who owns the corner lot?
The corner lot here? It's proposed, basically, to all get this, this to be tied in if the rezoning goes through.
Those three parcels will become one parcel, and that'll be Dollar General?
It's going to be, that's, that's our understanding, or a general retail establishment. But again, so basically, right here and south would stay residential, to the north would be neighborhood business. And, you know, this one's a little unusual, because you've already got the existing commercial there. We've seen site plans. They can fit everything in the existing neighborhood business. Our understanding is they're adding this piece for a stormwater detention pond. The ordinance does not require that. That's just something they've elected to do. So this case is a little unusual, because again, they can fit with their proposing, with their septic, with their setbacks, all on the area that's already zoned commercially.
I can't imagine this is any kind of critical watershed area. Why did they?
It's not in a watershed, so yeah, I mean, the applicant might be better able to explain why they're offering up to do a detention pond on their own. Because again, we're not requiring that they do it.
Okay.
If I'm understanding correctly, the business can proceed even if we don't rezon this area?
From the site plans that they've submitted, it does appear that they could fit in the existing area that's already zoned.
What's the benefit to having a pond?
For the county in general, I mean, it's the control of that stormwater that the site's going to produce. You know, for the residents in there to know that that stormwater gets going to be managed would be a, would should be a big benefit to those adjacent property owners.
Depending on, go ahead. I was going to say, can the applicant just address their intent as far as the concerns that some of the neighbors have relative to the trees bordering the property? Or bordering the, I'm sorry, bordering West Lackey Farm Road?
I met Miss Stephanie out there earlier today, and we kind of looked at, you know, the depth of the trees, and I said, well, you know, our goal is to leave what we can. You know, it's expensive to knock things down, and, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, but of course, because of drainage issues in that area, I can't, you know, she wants a guarantee, 100% guarantee, and I, you know, until I get on site and we see what's going on, you know, we'll try to leave as many as we can. And, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. We build in stores all over the U.S., and we understand the concept, you know, of neighborhood being a good neighbor. And, you know, our goal is to, you know, have people, have the store look attractive and have people come and shop. So our goal is to try to be a good neighbor, but of course, it is, you know, three fourths of it's already zoned correctly. And, you know, what, you know, we are looking at just that little, little piece. And so I would like to try to leave some trees for them, but, you know, I, with our site plan, we're, of course, we're, we're getting qualified through DOT, through the environmental, through, through Irondale County as well. So we've got a lot of people looking at this and making recommendations, and it is septic, and it is a heavily wooded lot. Right now, there's an abandoned house that's actually quite an attractive nuisance. If you haven't been there, it's kind of scary. So it's just, it just depends on your, I mean, I can understand what they're saying, but we'll, we'll try to be a good neighbor, because we'll have, you know, we'll be creating a parking lot there, the stormwater detention. Apparently, the water comes across the road. There's a lot of water that comes through there. So I think it'll actually, and she made a comment about that there's some other property nearby that floods or something. So I think it'll actually help alleviate, and I think just the idea of having it there for them is new, and they've got to get accustomed to it. And so we want to be a good neighbor.
Does the Broadway Group own any other Dollar Generals in the county?
I can't hear you.
Does the Broadway Group own any other Dollar Generals in the county?
Well, our tenant, you know, usually, we'd prefer to, you know, I'd just like to leave it at general retail at this point, and just let you know that. So I, you know, that's a lot of hearsay, but I don't.
I'm just curious, your willingness to go through the expense of a retention pond on the southeast corner of that property, is it prompted by the existing topo of the property where?
Yes, yes.
And, I mean, are you, you folks just altruistic people who don't want water going across your neighbor, or is it?
You cannot shed water on other people's property. In this way, it keeps it on the property. I mean, we're being monitored by, you know.
Is this a DNR requirement?
Yes. I mean, yes, I mean, I've been to DNR today, so, and on another side. So there's quite a few layers that we go through. It'd be, you know, like I said, try to be a good neighbor. I mean, it's, we're not, there's nothing here we're trying to do. We don't want to disturb anything else extra we don't need to.
The reason I ask about owning the other businesses is maybe you could impress, if you do, impress upon the other businesses to be good neighbors.
We, we did not develop those, so I don't know. I'm not familiar with those. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else who wishes to speak?
I would just speak one more time if I could, Stephanie Baumgart. I spoke with her earlier, and she did come out there. The trees that are in question are actually in the power lines. They're like on the other side of the power lines, closer to the road rather than the property. The trees that are in question are close to the ditch, so I don't see how they would be putting a parking lot in a ditch. So this is just like courtesy of the neighborhood. You know, there's, I mean, if you look around, there's houses on every side. I mean, I know it's a neighborhood business, but this is a neighborhood. And a lot of people have lived there for years and worked hard for these properties. And I'm a taxpayer, I pay my taxes on time, and I try to live by my community and do what's best for the community. And she's come out and worked with me and talked about the trees, and I think she's really trying, but the tree, we're really not asking for too much. Like I said, the trees are on the other line of the power lines. I mean, they're like almost in the right of way. I mean, it's just a strip of trees. It's not like we're asking for a big, thick bunch of trees left, considering they are cutting down a whole lot full of mature trees. And aren't we really trying to do better by the environment nowadays? I mean, if you think about it, if the trees don't have to go, we'd appreciate the trees really staying. And she seems to, you know, think that they can stay, but we really need to impress upon they need to stay, because we have to live there for years to come. And I mean, just if there's trash, you know, in the community, I know they don't have anything to do with that when people come and throw trash out, but it, I mean, it's going to be in our yards, you know, and we have children and different things, you know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Todd, where's ingress and egress on this? Is it on Lackey Farm Road or is it on Taylorsville Highway?
That will be up to DOT to decide, and we've seen a site plan showing it on both two different versions.
Neither one would be permissible under our ordinance, it'd just be totally up to DOT.
Correct. The applicant's saying Taylorsville Highway is what they're deciding.
But there's, because of the way our ordinance is written now, with the conditions incorporated into the classification of zoning, there's no way we could ask the applicant as a condition for rezoning that they would leave trees.
Correct, with this being a straight rezoning, and the fact that the piece in question for tonight is this piece. You'd have to back up and rezone a piece that's already straight neighborhood business, neighborhood business conditional, in order to get a condition on that piece.
That's a good point, the contract zone. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name's Jewel Jordan. If the trees are not left, we will do our very best to take all the business that we can away from Dollar General, and they should take that into consideration before they build there. And we can do so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, making most to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment, that to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that set approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, if this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this case? Either for or against. Okay, this time we declare this meeting being a public hearing for the consideration of the proposed 2014, 2015 budget. Madam Clerk, do we have a sign-up sheet anywhere?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is anyone signed up?
I did not find a...
Okay, that's fine. All right. Ms. Miller, I'll go ahead and recognize you first, then. You can speak. If you would, folks, if you desire to speak about the budget, please state your name and state what you intend to speak about, if you would, for... Go ahead.
My name is Amy Miller, and I want to thank you for allowing me to address the Board of Commissioners tonight. I'm here in regards to the Animal Services and Control Budget. I'm a lifelong Iredell County resident, animal lover, and taxpayer. I've stood in this very spot in the past and asked for improvements to the Animal Services and Control Department, and I am happy to say that I've seen them firsthand, and they are doing amazing work there. But I stand here tonight torn on their proposed budget. As an advocate, I feel it's both laudable and admirable, our commitment to make this county a no-kill shelter and improve adoption and spay neuter rates. I know that this is a long-term strategy to improve the lives of both the citizens and the animals of this county. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned by several things. With the average response time for animal control calls being one hour and 23 minutes for the working day and two hour and 49 minutes for after-hours and weekend, I'm concerned about public safety and the safety of owners' property. Proposed budget calls for two additional officers in three to five years. I'm not sure how we can justify waiting three to five years. In the justification letter for the creation of the new veterinary position, it clearly states that the new goals of the department have been hobbled by priorities of the past, and what was necessary for a department focused on enforcement does not serve our goal of adopting modern public shelter policies and the public demands, including more humane treatment of animals and increased live release. That's adoption. I'm in favor of more adoptions. I think you all know that. I am definitely in favor of humane treatment of animals. But other counties have made vast improvements in these areas by educating and training their staff on better practices, strengthening the animal control ordinances, and by working with more nonprofit rescue groups. The proposed budget calls for ordinance changes, but by shifting the focus and resources away from enforcement to adoption, to welfare, and to an on-staff veterinarian, I'm not sure how the current staff, who are already receiving a larger number of calls than they can quickly respond to, will be able to handle the new calls brought about by the improved animal control ordinance. I am in favor of an improved animal control ordinance, but we cannot give staff members additional calls and additional responsibilities and not give them additional resources. I have found no other government-run shelter in North Carolina that is currently or has made the commitment to be a no-kill shelter as quickly as Iredell County has in this budget proposal. I would love to see Iredell County be a no-kill shelter. I would love it, but I don't want that to happen at the detriment to enforcement and safety. Studies and research have proven that abused and neglected animals are the ones that pose a danger to our community. Enforcement is the way to help these animals and keep our community safe. The goal of having a full-time licensed veterinarian on staff has only been done by one other county, Wake. There is a population difference of over 700,000 people, an unemployment rate difference of 2%, and a difference of right at $15,000 average yearly income. That means we have a smaller population, higher unemployment, and less yearly income per household to work with. By the county's own research, we cannot and should not offer a rate that's comparable to Wake County, the state of North Carolina, and after talking to local practices, we aren't even offering a comparable rate to they that they can offer to entry-level veterinarians. Because of this, I'm worried about the skill level of the applicants and the quality of services this county will receive. After talking to several vets, I'm also concerned that there's no request for an additional Vet Tech. There is a Vet Tech on staff, but she is the Animal Services, Animal Care Supervisor. We can't ask her to do two full-time jobs. I'm also unclear as to why the county should take on a spay neuter clinic. There are multiple low-cost spay neuter clinics in this county that are not being used. There's also a facility that will be built in Mooresville. Why should we, as a county, take over a task that's already not being utilized by the citizens and shift our focus away? I'm not sure that this solution will solve the overpop, the problem of overpopulation. This goal of this county agency and every other county agency, in my opinion, should be to protect the county residents and their properties. Changing from enforcement to welfare agency is admirable, but not necessarily practical. The added workload to these staff members seems a disservice to both our residents and the staff. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. There is an additional sheet to the County Commissioners page if you would like to ask me about that later.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Miller? If not, thank you, ma'am. Okay, anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
I'm Amy Isley with SCAN, the Child Abuse Prevention Center, and I wanted to tell you thank you. You gave me a little bit of raise, and it will be extremely helpful. Last year, you helped us to work in the homes of over 150 people weekly to prevent child abuse, to teach parents who, as children, were abused and didn't learn how to do it the right way. You helped us do that. You also helped us work with over 300 people last year in parenting classes and over 28 families in supervised visits. Because of this, we were able to really work towards preventing child abuse in Iredell County. It takes a neighborhood, it takes a community, it takes the whole county to help our children be safe. And without you behind us as a very vital part of that community, we couldn't do it. Not only does your financial help make a difference, but just knowing that, you know, you guys are behind us too, it helps my staff of four and a half work with all of those people. It's what keeps us going and gives us that energy. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? I've never seen anything like this. Been a long time since we had a budget and nobody wanted to speak. Okay. If there's no one else, we declare this a public hearing closed. Last call. Anybody? Okay, we declare this a public hearing closed. Thank you.
I didn't get called a coward this year. I'm so excited. I got by without an insult.
Okay, Mr. Smith, this is administrative matters. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The first is a request from the Planning Department to call for a release of jurisdiction for Magnolia Bay's JV LLC. Matthew Todd will make that presentation.
Tonight, we have, of course, just a call for the public hearing, the release of ETJ. You can see on the map, it's outlined in blue. It's off of Big Indian Loop, Little Indian Lane. It's adjacent to existing jurisdiction of Mooresville, and the proposal is just to combine it in with that existing track to develop a residential use. Just another map of the property showing in relation to the county ropes course, again, the lake. Cornelius Road is running across the lake from this site. And again, this is just a call for the public hearing, but I'd be happy to answer any questions for the applicants here as well.
Okay. Any question, Mr. Todd? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for July 15, 2014, for a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdictions in the town of Mooresville by SLF 2 NC Magnolia Bay's JV LLC.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second item B is a request from the Sheriff's Office to apply for a 2014-15 JAG grant. And Rick Eads is here from the Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Well, the Sheriff's Office is requesting is to, or for consent to apply for the 2014-15 Justice Assistance Grant. It's a grant we apply for every year and have for the past several years. The Department of Justice will only allow us to apply for $16,384 this round. This is a no-match grant. The money will be used for equipment for the Sheriff's Youth Athletic League, to purchase instructional equipment for the Sheriff's Training Academy, and as well, we will fund the renewal for the accreditation for the crime lab. We're just asking for permission to apply for the grant.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Eads? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Item C is a request from Parks and Recreation to allocate some contingency funds for use of the Scotts Rosenwald Park, and Robert Woody will make that request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Three years ago, we applied for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant in the amount of $186,300, $183,650, sorry. And this grant is coming to a close. As part of the grant, we were required to allocate 5% of the project into a contingency fund of $8,200. Our grant closes on June 30 of this month, and we're requesting to move the contingency into the building improvements line for this grant so that we can spend the money. It is reimbursable, along with the rest of the funds that were allocated for this project.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Woody? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The final administrative matter is a request for approval of the May 8, 2014 minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have five announcements. Iredell County Planning Board, three announcements. Region F Aging Advisory Committee, two announcements. Mooresville Planning Board, one announcement. We'll come now to appointments to boards and commissions. Centralina Workforce Development, we have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations.
Okay, for awards. For Centralina Workforce Development?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joey Chambers to be the private sector representative.
Okay. Have a nomination from Commissioner Robertson of Mr. Joey Chambers. Are there any other nominations? If not, I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Chambers by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So Mr. Chambers is appointed by acclamation. That brings us to the Home Community Care Block Grant Committee. We have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations. I will nominate Commissioner Gene Houtt. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Houtt by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Social Service Board, we have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations.
Nominate Ms. Alef Stewart.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Ms. Stewart by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, motion carries for one. Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, one appointment. Floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Ms. Betsy Yarborough.
Okay. Vice Chairman Norman nominates Ms. Betsy Yarborough. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Ms. Yarborough by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? New business? Any new business come to our attention?
I'm okay, except that one. Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose that, that we ask for a committee to be formed that would examine, that would examine alternatives that might reduce either the number of prisoners or the number of days prisoners are retained in the county jail with the restriction that anything that they come up with would not endanger public safety. And my suggestion for that would be that, that we would ask for that to be led or headed up by Superior Court Judge Joe Crosswhite, and that he would, the members of that committee would be maybe a representative of one of, one of the district court judges, representative from the district attorney's office, representative from the sheriff's office, preferably somebody in the jail, or working for the jail, may I, might I say? And then possibly a representative appointed by this Board of Commissioners. This is very loosely worded, but, but I think that there's been a lot of discussion about if, if the prisoner population could be reduced by some administrative-type changes, and I would think that this small working group might be a way to get that started.
Would you not include clerk of court?
The clerk could. We could. Okay, we can, a representative or the clerk of court. So that would be one, two, three, four, five. That would be six members that we would recommend, of course, you know, they could include or bring other people on board as, as they saw fit.
Okay. I beg your pardon, Mr. Robertson, did you actually place that in the form of a motion? I was doing a little housekeeping over here.
Don't think you did.
I think that I did, but if I didn't, I'll make it again. I'll, I'll make the motion that we, that we would ask that a committee, or will make, I'll make the motion that we form a committee that would examine alternatives that might reduce either the number of prisoners or the number of, of days prisoners are retained in the county jail without endangering public safety. And then I just listed the, the people who could be members.
Well, I support the effort, but it just occurred to me, there was, on the jail task force we had for jail construction, there was a subcommittee that was tasked with doing that to some extent. Mr. Smith, you remember that? I do. I'd have to look back to see who was actually... Let's, let's see if they've actually made any progress and see who was on that, and I'm sure some of those were these people right here, and it would avoid, certainly avoid duplication or trying to find people who would serve on that committee since... avoid duplication, or trying to find people who would serve on that committee since... Okay. All right, any discussion on that motion? Not, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I have a matter of new business. I would like to direct our clerk to craft a letter to our legislative delegation, in which we would ask those folks to look into the implementation of technology as it relates to court documents. I think if you've been around the courthouse, you can walk through there, and you could see that literally hundreds of square feet of floor space could be freed up with the implementation of technology. It'll do a long way toward making that place more efficient as far as retrieving records. And as far as record-keeping itself, I mean, if you needed to keep some documents off-site, you can keep them in a climate-controlled area, and you can rent that a whole lot cheaper than you can spend per square feet, heading court space, I'm sure. It's come to my attention, if you get a speeding ticket, a highway patrolman will write you a ticket, and he'll fill it out on his mobile data terminal in his car, and when it gets to the courthouse, it's back to the way they did it in 1965. It goes back to a paper method. And that is needless labor and needless use of floor space. I've talked to them, a couple of, a couple of them about it already. Any other new business? County Manager's Report.
Really have nothing to report. I would like to thank all of you for all the long hours in the last month and a half or so, putting together this budget, and I'd like to thank the staff, particularly Finance, because they are crucial in this process. So, just, that's all I have to report.
Okay, are we prepared to give any instruction to the staff at this time on the crafting of a budget ordinance?
Well, that's, that is our next step, and I was, Susan and I have already talked about it, and she's actually been working on that. We were prepared to bring it up at the next meeting.
And everybody's got a clear understanding of what the decision we've made as far as current expense for the school? Okay. If y'all ready, we'll just pull the trigger and let them do it. Okay, I'd make a motion that we instruct the staff to bring forth a budget ordinance at our next meeting, based upon the revisions that were made in our budgets, including the one made late this evening in regard to an increase in the per-people funding for schools. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there, closing a little bit too early?
No close session.
We've got no close session. Okay. We have no close session. If there's no other business come to our attention, all from motion, we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.